Here to school thirty? I'm sorry. That's how long the week it's been. I've been to so many graduations. School twenty-nine, I apologize for that. We have attended so many graduations. It's been such a great week here in the city of Elizabeth. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being here tonight. It's, you know, we've been taking the board meetings on the road throughout the city of Elizabeth here for the past six months. Uh, we used to limit it just to one school, but now we think it's so important that the parents and the residents throughout the city of Elizabeth get to see these wonderful facilities and all the hard work that's going on here in School Twenty-Nine at the Albert Einstein Academy. And let me start off by thanking and recognizing our school principal, Linda Sinasset. And our vice principal, John Melody. And let me also thank and recognize all the teachers, uh, the support staff here, the food service people, security guards that work day in and day out to make this a wonderful school. This, as many of you know, is certainly one of our top schools in Elizabeth. And we can certainly, Elizabeth Board of Education couldn't be prouder. And, uh, and yesterday, it was our pleasure to announce the largest graduating class ever in the city of Elizabeth with one thousand sixty-eight students graduating from our high school. You know, we are proud of these students. As many of you already know, the Elizabeth Public Schools is now the number-one urban school district in the state of New Jersey. And thank you all for helping us make it come back. We've graduated more people this year than ever before. And now we're, as they prepare on for their secondary education. And we're so proud tonight to come here to School Twenty-Nine. And one of the highlights of this meeting will be certainly, uh, recognizing some of the great students we have here and their performances, and also recognizing the staff and the parents. Now, we're gonna officially open up the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to Rural Community Newspapers, The Star Ledger, and Cable Vision of Elizabeth on Friday, June twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of five hundred Going Broadway Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers to this June twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board, a public matter meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education's permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I've also asked that you silence the sound on your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these meetings, uh, proceedings be accurately recorded. I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time out from your busy schedules to join us here this evening. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board, and participants with a public portion must sign in one hour prior to the advertised start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet takes the name, the address, the telephone number, and the reason a person wants to comment, whether it is an agenda item or general education comment. Before I call the roll, let me just introduce our board members. Standing at my right, we have Stefano Calella. Fernando Nazco. Paulus Pedelo. Our vice president of our board, this is Elsie Stevens-Paschino. It's Theo Stevens. And over to my right, and to my left, if you'll rate, we have Commissioner Paul Pereira. Anthony Battal. Commissioner Francisco Gonzalez. And our excellent superintendent, Mr. Pablo Vino. Mr. Kennedy, you do the roll call.
Battal. Calella. Here. Castilla. Gonzalez. Here. Nazco. Here. Patla. Here. Pereira. Tricia. Here. Montero.
Here. I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand for the invocation, which will be led by Dr. William Green, the controller.
Let's bow our heads in prayer. Lord of heavenly Father, we are, we thank you for this day that you've given us, oh God. And now, oh Lord, we just ask your blessings upon us as we, we ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we make decisions. We thank you again for a successful school year. Now bless us tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Before we commence the official business of the Elizabeth Board of Education this evening, I ask that we please offer a moment of silence for the passing of two Elizabeth Public Schools team members. Paul Casali and our teacher, Alexander Hamilton, perpetuary academy, and Betty Lawson, a learning disabilities teacher consultant at George Washington School Number One. Paul Casali and Betty Lawson devoted themselves to enriching the lives of the young boys and girls who attend the Elizabeth Public Schools, and through their passionate work made an indelible impact on their respective learning communities. On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education and the Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I offer the heartfelt condolences to the Casali and Lawson families, as well as to all those who knew Paul and Betty. Let's take this moment to silently bow our heads in their memory. Thank you. Now to present our pledge of allegiance, Alexis Metos, eighth grade student here at the Doctor Albert Einstein Academy.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I represent our star-spangled banner. We'll be another student here from the academy, Ruland Bowley, eighth grade. Thank you, Ruland. I represent our pledge of ethics, Asia Hawley, eighth grade student.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools professional and learning community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place, listen respectfully when someone else is teaching, but pay close attention and not interrupt them, speak in a calm voice and use proper language, dress appropriately for teaching and learning, inspire the best in myself and others from bringing success and learning from the state, care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness, be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, You Make Me Want to Jump. We're now gonna present the core beliefs video.
We believe all students can learn and achieve a high level.
In Elizabeth Public Schools, rigor means actively creating and implementing challenging standards that define the level of cognitive complexity of expected learning. Such standards are applied at all levels to the district, including classroom activities, instructional plans, course content, student work, assessments, both summative and formative. We will ensure that all students graduate prepared to pursue a post-secondary education. It is through such an education that the achievement gap is eliminated. Elizabeth Public Schools students will strengthen the nation's economic, intellectual, and social impact on the world. In order to do this, we will ensure that every student, regardless of their socioeconomic background, is inspired to participate fully in their educational experience and cultivate a true passion for learning.
We believe that teachers make a positive difference in student achievement.
Elizabeth Public Schools teachers make a positive difference visible not only through higher test scores, graduation rates, and attendance, but by championing the love of learning at every opportunity.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and celebrate world-class teachers.
A world-class educator has high expectations of himself and their students, is willing to challenge and be challenged, and pursues learning opportunities for continuous growth. Such an educator sees the potential in every child with no exception. They teach with passion and make an effort to make sure that every student reaches their full potential.
We believe that effective leaders produce excellent results.
Effective leaders are conduits for student success, inspiring Elizabeth students to think, to learn, to achieve, and to care. Effective leaders impassion others, earning the trust and loyalty of those around them. It is their incredible passion and energy that engage, inspire, and motivate others to achieve excellence.
We will recruit, develop, retain, and reward result-driven leaders.
The goal is only excellent results, and effective leaders do not tolerate anything less than excellence. Our leaders will demonstrate an honoring will to contribute to and enable those around them to increase student achievement.
We believe that a high-performance team produces a legacy of enduring greatness.
Elizabeth Public Schools is dependent on its internal and external networks working in collaboration to ensure high student achievement. The internal team members include the teachers, staff, and community members that directly affect student achievement. The external team includes the community at large, partnerships with nonprofit organizations and universities, faith-based communities, and state and national education agencies.
We build a high-performance team that achieves excellence.
The end result is a sustainable system that supports networks of people committed to excellence through education. Our students will leave Elizabeth Public Schools with a passion for learning that will lead them through a lifetime of fulfilled journey.
Thank you. Now we get to our favorite part of the meeting, which is certainly recognizing and honoring some of the great talent and hard work that goes on here at School Twenty-Nine. You know, a former Supreme Court Chief Justice has called Elizabeth one of the most successful urban school districts in New Jersey, and the residents of Elizabeth can take pride in those extraordinary accomplishments of these city school kids. All over New Jersey, they are talking about the success here of our public schools, and that is because of all of your children and because of all the hard work of the staff that goes on here at School Twenty-Nine. And we are so very, very lucky to have the students and the teachers that we have here at this school and throughout our city that are helping make this the number-one public, you know, school system in the state, and soon. We're not going to stop here. With the leadership of my fellow colleagues here on this board, we are going to become the best urban school district or the best public school district in the United States of America with the help of all of you here today. So give yourselves a round of applause for all of you. Now we're gonna have our performances from the fourth through eighth grade students here at the Doctor Albert Einstein Academy. The first one is gonna be You Make Me Want to Jump. Great job. Let's give them another round of applause. Now we're gonna have a STEAM video presentation prepared by Craig Webb's STEAM Broadcasting Class.
Believers in a Better Tomorrow. That's why when I took office, I called for an all hands-on deck approach to science, man, technology, and engineering. To make sure these fields get the respect and attention that they deserve.
Doctor Albert Einstein Academy celebrates seven years of academic excellence. We are K-38 ranked seventh in the district after high school and GNT schools. We celebrate the success of our pre-K ranked third in the district. Here at Doctor Albert Einstein Academy, we offer unique programs aligned with students to engage in hands-on learning through the engineering model. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Architecture, and Math. Our STEAM program is designed with the intent to foster the development of life skills to succeed, collaboration, communication, problem-solving, and time-management skills. STEAM courses for grades one through five is based on the Engineering as Elementary curriculum, an age-appropriate curriculum developed by the Boston Museum of Science to expose students to the basic engineering concepts by incorporating literacy, science, math, and the application of the engineering process in a problem-based design project.
I see students wanting to learn more about careers in STEM, and they're more interested in getting books that have to do with STEM careers.
As a result of STEAM, I see, uh, problem-solving skills developed with the first graders.
I see that the kids are relating it more to their everyday world.
What are you working on? Cause I...
I'm working on the My Love Train. Uh, My Love Train has a train that uses magnets to propel a push track and to float above the track without anything touching it on the bottom.
Examples of higher thinking that I've seen within the Engineering as Elementary with my students is the, the fact that they're interacting with one another and challenging each other when it comes to their projects towards the end of the, of the module. I see where they, um, are speaking outside the box.
Do they really exist?
Yes.
Or is that just a, a story?
They really exist in Japan.
How do you know?
Cause we saw a magazine that one of the teachers were black from Japan.
Every time we ask a question, you know, why does this work better than this? They have to force themselves to really think and explain this works, you know, this way because...
But where's their picture of the My Love Train in the magazine? So show it to me.
Uh, my students get very excited when it's time for STEAM. They enjoy, um, working together, they enjoy working in groups, and, um, they love the end of the day when it's time for STEAM.
Middle school students, grade sixty-eight, so like two STEAM courses a year. Middle school STEAM courses are designed to develop students' problem-solving skills and challenge their creativity through real-life problem-based design projects using the engineering design process. Middle school courses offering include robotics, robotics, vertical gardening, design of earthquake-proof structures, broadcasting studio production, school-wide composting project, and alternative energy. In video production and broadcasting, students will get a hands-on feel for the production studio and news casting. Activities will include conducting interviews, creating podcasts, photojournalism, creating documentary, and producing narratives. An agriculture science student finds out what plants need to grow and create a hydroponic system, or design and create a living wall system. Then compared to vegetables grown traditionally in our school's garden, your class will help set up the school greenhouse and maintain it. And Lego Robotics competition, students will get ready to take Lego Robotics to the next level.
My STEAM course this year has been about, uh, creating, uh, earthquake-proof buildings. Uh, my students have been collaborating, first learning how to build a simple floor and then eventually designing the structure that can withstand an earthquake. That was our ultimate goal by the end of the semester.
We're learning about how to build structures, um, earthquake-proof and learning about, I learned about how to, um, cut, like cut wood from different angles and learn how to, like glue and glue wood together to make a, a sturdy structure. And I built this structure and I used four piece-to-roof for each corner because last trial, our class made, uh, one stick on each corner, and it wasn't very sturdy, but now I think it's very sturdy, and I think I'll hold up for a lot.
The skills have been amazing. Uh, my students have gone from not knowing how to, um, simply cut wood, um, create angles. Uh, it's been amazing to be able to use, uh, these buffers that we have to create direct angles, forty-five degree angles, depending on what they needed to create on their design. Um, they've collaborated so well, they question each other without me being a part of the discussion. Uh, it's really fascinating to see, especially once we get to our, one, the final product of testing, it's just amazing seeing the students watch, uh, watch each other's work on the shape cable and then be able to go back and evaluate without, with very little teacher interaction.
STEAM to me is, it's very approaching to me, like in a good way, cause it could be like a career, a career for many people in school. And so it just gives you formation and when you look to the future, it, like it, you could learn, you like you, what you learned from school, you could learn, you could learn from it.
Before I just chant. You got an hour? Learn English. Yeah, my clothes. Soon as you see something. Six, six point out. Can you cross the line?
Yeah.
Six, five. Six, five, six, six eight, seven. Seven point out. Seven point three. Eight point oh, eight point five, nine. Nine point oh. Nine five. Nine five. Stand back. Get dizzy. We were at eleven, five, actually eleven, six, right on my girl.
Maybe Mr. Webb couldn't be here tonight, but let's, I want to congratulate and thank him for that great presentation, uh, of what the kids do here at this wonderful School Twenty-Nine. Let's give Mr. Webb a round of applause. Now we have some special guests visiting us from School Twenty-Eight. Juan Pablo Duarte, Jose Pulio Martínez. They're gonna be here tonight to... They're gonna do the musical Grease. They're gonna do Grease Lightning and the Beauty of School Dropout from School Twenty-Eight.
Hey, so can they, what are you doing with this?
Me, Grease Lightning.
The one, the only, Grease Lightning.
Oh, better rock, yeah. With a golden eagle, they'll be cleaning out the door. You know I ain't running to the rear, took it by the grease lightning. Grease Lightning, burning the door. Grease Lightning, go, grease lightning, go. Grease Lightning, it's a big, 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 big. Grease Lightning, go, grease lightning. It was a breeze, breeze, grease lightning. Couple of bricks, uh, like a dirty, it's been a bit. I don't even got a sword, it's a little bit clean, it's a bit. This is a little shocked, it's a little bit wrong. You know I ain't running to the rear, took it by the grease lightning. Grease Lightning, burning the door. Grease Lightning, go, grease lightning, go. Grease Lightning, it's a big, 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 big. Grease Lightning, go, grease lightning. It was a breeze, breeze, grease lightning.
Let's give all those young men another round of applause. Great job.
Mr. President? President? Yes, yes. If I may say, I had the opportunity of visiting School 28 and Miss Jimenez put on the first play in that school. And it was a great production, her and her administration. The kids had a great time and that's what it's important. They have an opportunity to perform, but to work together and have a good time outside the classroom. There's a lot to learn outside the classroom as well through these programs. Thank you, Miss Jimenez, and to the vice principals for all that hard work. It was great. School 28, great to meet you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tejado. Before the next performance, I'd like to recognize the principal, vice principals from School 28, Miss Sulete Hernandez, please stand up. And the vice principals, Miss Jolton Knack and Miss Nancy George Allen. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you for being here at our final performance from School 28, performing The Beauty School Dropout from Grease.
You're still beat sad to tell, a teenage nerd who well. Most mixed up, on the liquid, on the block. Your future's won't be known, cause of your career now. Can't even penetrate it on your smile. It's no drama, graduation day for you. It's no drama. You still been done, that's your move. But at least you're gonna take your time, wash your evening. After spending all that time, the doctor's still close up. Can't move it, can't move it. Why keep your feet on, so I'm a stupid. What I am doing. You better dream, I haven't tried. If you go for your own, then come on, you will join us then. Turning your tears from home, come back to high school. Beauty's no drama. Beauty's no drama. And I'm proud of the corner store. Beauty's no drama. Beauty's no drama. It's about time you knew the score. But they couldn't teach you anything. You think you're sunshine, but no test of love. Unless you was a sucker. Baby, don't blow me. Don't sweat it. Forget it. Forget it. Who was there then, by the sun? Now your legs are curled, your eyes are blurred, but still the world's full. Grab off that angry face, come back to high school. Baby, don't blow me. Don't put my good advice to shame, baby, from it. Even your rugby's insane, now I'm on the shot with all the blood. I really got to fly. Not to be going to that much of a love. It's no drama. It's no drama. Come back to high school. It's no drama. It's no drama. Come back to high school. It's no drama. It's no drama. Come back to high school.
Give a round of applause. What a great job. What's your name? Well, we're Zola. Let's get these guys to the next future stars of Broadway right here. Terrific, guys. Thank you all for coming out here tonight. Great job. Let's get a picture with them. Let me have all my folks, board members, please come down here, join me for a picture with these talented stars. Thank you. See, we had a backup plan just in case he couldn't make it today. We had, Commissioner Tejado was going to fill in for him and sing a couple songs. Thank God you came today. Great job. Thank you. Great job. Let's make some noise. This is why we're the number one university in the state. Now we're going to present the stars of excellence and it's going to be presented by one of our stars here on the Elizabeth School Board. One special young man, Commissioner Anthony Padler.
Good evening, everybody. The first presentation is the Student Excellence Award, the New Jersey State Police Top Physical Challenge of 2013. Students from throughout our district recently competed in the New Jersey State Police Top Physical Challenge of 2013. The challenge is a boot camp-style fitness test held for selected physical education students. The importance of physical fitness and staying healthy is stressed as students are encouraged to do their personal best. The Board of Education would like to congratulate the following students for meeting this physical challenge and exhibiting excellence. Please come forward as I call your name if you're here. From Benjamin Franklin, School Number Thirteen, Jeremiah Gien. And Alex Sanchez. From Abraham Lincoln, School Number Fourteen, Jonathan Cologne, Joe Santos. And Danielle Caixal. From Christopher Columbus, School Number Fifteen, Lenine Pentecor. Franco Pugna. Bernie Etjeveri. Nadeline Faro. Jimmy Gonzalez. Ramon Jimenez. Jamie Martinez. Luis Martinez. Marina Pereira. Gastel Posse. John, I'm sorry, Jan Rosas. Chris Richardson. Emile Rios. Kalia Whitehead. And Jaylon Wright. From John Marshall, School Number Twenty, Jason Miller and Lenny Coleman. From Dr. Orlando Adrera Academy, School Number Twenty-Six. Beatrice Ariza. Diana Bonilla. Karen Carvajal. Sebastian Cruz. Raziel Vullvesi. Catherine Esbenal. Melissa Fernandez. Deontay Hall. Kayla Hernandez. Oscar Hilario. Tiffany Kensa. Jaquiel Lovett. Andrew Moritz. Joseph Navarro. Emily Olivera. Kevin Hagan. Kevin Privado. Yonis Romero. Joshua Rosado. Shabali Silva. Michelle Valles. Jessia West. Emilio Washington. Rayquan Williams. And Andrew Flores. From Juan Pablo Duarte, Jose Julian Martínez, School Number Twenty-Eight. Jean Amelcar. Juan Bentencourt. Anthony Bryant. Zaire Gilliam. Sean Hurd. Omar Asim. And Christian Paguda. And from Admiral William F. Alsey Junior Leadership Academy, Sylvester Ali. Danny Polo. Julian Soto. Julian Castaneda. And Luis Marmon. And Luis Marmol.
Once again, I wanted to thank all the students and all the presenters and all the award recipients, let's give them another round of applause. Now to present the Stars of Excellence. For the following team members of Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, School Number Twenty-Nine, who have displayed commitment to excellence will be presented by our school board member, Mr. Carlos Trujillo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We're celebrating here. The following team members of Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, School Number Twenty-Nine, have displayed a commitment to excellence. Each team member spearheads a committee, program, club, or organization, and gives time after school and on weekends to assist the students and the school. Would the principal, Mr. Nesta, and the vice principal, are they still here? Where are they? Oh, there you are, whoa! Absolutely.
It just, I'm just so very proud of our staff, and we have an entire staff, a group of teachers, our custodians, food service workers, security guards, everybody here is really a family. It gives me such great pleasure to see that the people that are here, many of them came with their entire family, so they have our support, we are one big extended family here at Einstein. The video clip you saw, seen before, that was one of our after-school theme elective classes, and that was completely done by our students, and they haven't been doing broadcasting all year, that was just a semester that they took. So, you know, congratulations to those students who made that video. Even though they went a little over on the time, I think I gave them four minutes and they doubled it, so.
No, thank you. Thank you, you guys are doing all the hard work, we're just gonna celebrate you. Now we thank, we thank you, these team members, for their dedication to students' achievement. Please come forward as I call your name. Francesca Alvarado. Nicholas Camarino. Mary Elizabeth Clark. Kathleen Flavin. Tamara Davis. Ogera Davis. Believe me, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, please correct me, okay, I wanna make sure I get your name, I've lived my whole life as Trujillo, and that's okay, I just wanna make sure I respect your name, okay? So if I make a mistake, please correct me. Tracy Estarekli. Anna Farina. William Flynn. Aruna Blas. Nancy Canelli. Joel Marie Corn. Evelyn Leonard. John Melody. Doris Moskowitz. Jessica Perez. Rui Agüero. Diana Rivera. Susan Rodriguez. Zainab Salam. Greg Webb. And Latoya Williams. Please, another round of applause from the Spanish speakers for all their commitment to our children.
Mr. Munoz has asked me on numerous occasions, what makes School Twenty-Nine so special? And it's definitely the people, there's a culture here that these people have created by dedicating so much of their spare time and family time that they give back to our school with our students. We have a greenhouse that's kept up all summer by teachers coming in. We have our healthy alliance, we earned the silver, the bronze award, the silver award. These are things are done outside of the regular class time. Our master teacher, Khadijah, is here with us. We participated in the Rutgers Near Program, so so many hours that these people give of theirselves. Mr. Melody, I had to include you, I know that was a little surprise to him, but the dedication of our staff and the wonderful things that go on here, there's just so much extra besides that regular day, and these are the people that make it possible by going way above and beyond, so thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, thank you. Every good school needs a great leader, alright, and we have a great leader here, alright, we agree? That's what's about, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you all once again, great job here at this wonderful school.
Now this is actually my favorite presentation, it's the Parent Stars of Excellence. And these are the following parents and guardians that are recognized under the Stars of Excellence Program for their dedication and continued support. They have contributed their time through various school programs, parent meetings, workshops, and fundraising activities. Their involvement is an example for others who wanna make a difference in their children's education. On behalf of our entire Elizabeth Board of Education, I thank these parents for their efforts. Armstrong Myrdal. Isna, Isna and Curtis Young. Karina Hoyos. And last but not least, Julian Monroe. Listen, Principal, Mr. Nesta just made a good point, this isn't a neighborhood school, this, you know, the children come from all over the city, so these parents travel from far and near to come here and participate, so let's really give them a round of applause for their dedication and commitment. Thank you once again. Also wanna recognize our board member who just joined us, Mr. Charlene Bathus, who are on the floor. Now three young students who have an opportunity to take a picture up here with us, I'm gonna call them up, really quick, Dominic Palo, Joseph Montsour, and Kevin Patino, please come on up. Thank you all again for being here this evening, that concludes our presentations and our performances this evening. I wanna thank you all for taking time out from your busy schedule here tonight to be here with the Elizabeth Board of Education and participate in our meeting. Thank you all for being here, we're only gonna take a five-minute recess right now, and thank you.